Active citizenship and rewarding lives. So we'll begin with the Chair's Report. There is not a lot to report on this side. Dr. Burnham will have her Superintendent's Report. So I'll turn it over to her. Or actually...
So this evening, we have on the agenda two presentations. Very happy to have both committees here this evening to present the work that they've been doing. So I think we'll start with the Behavioral Health Advisory Council. They're here to give you an update on the work that they've been doing and where we're headed for the year.
Come on up.
All right. Do you want to...can we present from here? Is that all right?
Sure.
Okay. I don't want to use the fancy...
You'll need the microphone.
Yes, a little closer.
How are you guys? I'm Jamie Millot. I'm a clinical social worker at the Middle High School.
I'm Carolyn Finch. I'm the nursing coordinator for the district and the high school nurse.
So we're going to run through just a quick update, a little bit of a review of what we're looking at. I know we were here last, I think, December, and we presented to you guys as the council was brand-new as of November. So our purpose, we're identifying and evaluating what our strengths are as a district and also what our areas of growth are for social-emotional education, school culture, and mental health support of students. We're guiding some professional development, which the PD Committee will speak to that in a moment, and then also developing a plan of how we're going to address that. Quick review of our members, we do have two new members. Patty McCarthy has joined us from the Lunenburg School-Linked Service Coordinator and Family and Community Engagement Program. So it's nice to have her a part of the group because she does have links to the community, and she's been doing this for a very long time. And Kristi, the BCBA down at the primary and elementary school, has also joined us.
So this is just a little bit about what we've already accomplished thus far in 2018-2019 school year. The council has met approximately every three to four weeks for a year, so we've had about eight meetings. We've joined the MAS-MHC, Mass School Health Mental Health Consortium. We are now members of that and attend regularly, so that's a great resource for us to have, to be a part of that. We have also implemented the Break Free From Depression Curriculum in the eighth grade. That was something new this year that came through this council. And then this year, the staff, all staff that are DESI-certified needs to do a mandatory training in the S-word. So that's also something new that has never happened before in our district.
The S-word is Training on Suicide Prevention and Education for Staff. So warning signs, what to do, goes through like bullying prevention. It really hits upon a lot of different areas. Just to look at some of the continuing education that our committee members went to during last school year, so there was a bunch of different out-of-district professional development conferences coupled by the MIAA that we attended, coupled by the Safe and Supportive Schools Initiative. We also had some in-district professional development last year. So we had the Federation for Children with Special Needs come out. They did a training on developmental childhood trauma and the impact on academic performance. So they did that with most of our staff last fall. They finished up and did the rest of the new staff and primary school staff and other support staff this year. We did a mindfulness training back in the winter, and then we also showed the film Paper Tigers, which speaks to the developmental childhood trauma training that we've already done, and that was back in the spring of 2019.
So I think we talked about this when we were here last year, that one of the first things that we did as a group was to do the shape assessment in each of our schools, which as a result of those assessments, we were able to target three areas of growth that we wanted to tackle this year. One of them was the screening of students. Secondly, some type of a documentation and reporting of mental health and social-emotional learning. And then the last thing was to look at the self-care of our staff.
So how are we addressing the areas of growth? We're pretty much in the process in all three areas right now. In terms of student screen, we're implementing universal mental health screenings at the high school. That's looking to be pushed out in the fall at some point, probably beginning of winter for grades nine through 12, so we can come back and report on that in a couple of months. We're being very thorough about how we're rolling that out, making sure that we have staff trained, we have letters to go out to parents, we've picked the assessment tools that are evidence-based. It's a screening tool in order for us to get those kids that are slipping through the cracks, not necessarily the kids already receiving services, but some of the ones that are at risk for anxiety and depression that we haven't yet identified, and being able to provide them information to go home with and to share with their family on potentially getting services, one of those being Interface, which we'll talk about those statistics and the data in a moment. In terms of documentation and reporting of impact, again, we're in the process. There's an emote pilot, which is an electronic real-time data collection tool that we're going to be using across the district. We're rolling out a pilot of that within the next month or so. Again, we'll be able to come back and give you guys some more information on that in a couple of months. And then lastly, the staff self-care piece, this really speaks to the professional development that we've started to do, which really gives the teachers an idea of what the kids are bringing into the classroom, but also how they can best support them and be better self-aware about what they're bringing into the classroom themselves. So we have a partnership with the Professional Development Committee. Again, they'll speak more to the awesome PD day we had last week. It was really amazing, so I don't want to steal their thunder, but that'll be great for you guys to hear. And again, we had the Federation for Children with Special Needs come back, and they did the training that they did last year with anyone who didn't get it, along with primary staff. We had custodians, athletic director, food services, a bunch of different personnel doing that training. And then in the afternoon, they showed this film, Resilience, which is all about developmental childhood trauma, impacted brain development, looks at adverse childhood experiences. We had a community screening in the evening. I know Jim attended, so he got to see that. It was about an hour. Unfortunately, you can't find Resilience online. Paper Tigers you can find on Amazon, though. It's pretty good.
Additional plans going forward in this next school year, we have applied for a grant through DESI for Safe and Supportive Schools. We're hoping to hear back from that probably within the next two to three weeks, we're hoping. We feel pretty positive that we'll hopefully get some money from that grant. That was something we applied for. The other thing that's come out of this Behavioral Health Advisory Council is something called kinship care, and that's really a name for a group of people for not just grandparents, but maybe aunts, uncles, any people that are raising children and giving them a place to get resources, be in a safe supportive environment where they can talk about each other's stories. And we didn't want to just call it a grandparents' support group because sometimes it's not necessarily a grandparent, but there is more and more we're seeing in this community, people taking care of children that aren't necessarily their child, and the struggles that go with that. So we thought this would be a great idea to support those people. Also, the leading with access and equity can...what is this? I don't remember what this is.
Sorry. Kate sent this out. We're going to send a team of individuals to this conference through DESI on the 24th.
Oh, that's right.
I know, there's a lot of conferences getting pushed at us, so a lot to keep track of. But we'll send a team to that in just a few weeks, which will be great to bring back some information as well.
And then we'll continue our partnership that we had already established with the William James College, the Interface Mental Health Referral Service, which we implemented last year. And there's the bounce that shows the data so far since we've joined into this resource. So this gives you the numbers so far of the referrals that have come through Lunenburg. And I think we're going to just see those continue to grow in the same pattern. We've had some great feedback from this resource. It's been very helpful.
Looking at the data, the first chunk of time from 7:01:18 to 11:30, we actually hadn't really rolled it out until probably last October or so. We used last September to really bring forth a lot of information, push it out to the community. So that, you know, reporting period is actually probably only two months' time, and then even through the next chunk of time, it didn't take into account the summer months. But we've seen a huge jump, and I think we've gotten a lot of good feedback from families. So it's been a really great resource. I think that's all we got. The last part is just to give us a follow on Twitter. We do have a Twitter now. We're the real deal.
And we're looking for followers.
Do you guys have any questions or any comments or anything for us?
I didn't have any questions, but you mentioned that I did go to the community screening for the Resilience film. I found that very sobering, very eye-opening for me personally, and looking at how those adverse childhood experiences affect everything.
Yeah.
And it's interesting how many of those factors we as adults have control over, and that we're putting these traumas onto our children voluntarily in most of those cases. And it's really, it is really eye-opening, and it was...there was one part that I found really striking about how many of the people who were involved in the support and care industry of people who've been traumatized were themselves rather high in their ACE scores.
Right.
That they were going out of their...they were dealing with their trauma by helping other people deal with theirs.
Right, and that's part of the self-awareness that's so important. One of the huge positives from all this is every single district staff member now knows what the ACEs are and understands what those are, you know? And everyone from staff, from, you know, teachers to custodians to food service people, they all know what it is now. So it's something to be mindful of, I think, on yourself, but also what the kids are bringing into the classroom, into the school building.
Thank you for what you've done. I think the professional development for the staff has been great. It's great to have all the staff trained. One thing I had a question about for clarification was you'd mentioned the student screening. I didn't know if that had already been done, if will it be done in the future? What's the timeline for that?
We're going to do that in the future, but like Jamie said initially, we really want to have this well-planned and thought-out before we just, you know, give these universal screenings to all the students. So we wanted to make sure that we have plenty of resources available that have been trained properly to handle a student that comes to them with something as a result of their screening. So we want to have all that in place. We want to have information about it, letters to go out to parents, explaining it to them, explaining it to the students. And then we did pick the two tools that we're going to use that are evidence-based tools. So that we expect is probably going to happen November, December is what we're thinking. But we just want to make sure we have everything in place before we screen them because it's, you know, there's going to be some...I don't know what we're going to get.
I think we want to make sure too that the kids are educated on it too, because then they can also be identifying these signs in their peers as well.
Exactly.
Yep. So I'd also like to acknowledge Mrs. Annika Scott and Mr. Chad Adams. They serve on both the Behavioral Health Advisory Council and the Professional Development So thank you for your work. And I think the film, Resilience, it just highlights the fact that this council and the work that they're doing is absolutely vital in education today. And the roles that our nurses, social worker, guidance, our BCBA's, the work that they do is significant in terms of helping students be ready to be in a classroom and learn. So they are vitally important in education today.
Absolutely.
This group has done extraordinary work in a short time.
They haven't been around for a full year yet, have they?
November, like 29th or something. We just looked at it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's exciting what they're doing.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, the Professional Development Committee is going to come up and has a presentation for us.
Can we move the mic over closer to the committee, please?
Gail, would you like that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just a little click. Can you push this a little closer? Okay. There you go. On the right click. Someone want?
Okay, so my name is Gail Ockerman. I'm a school counselor at Turkey Hill Elementary School.
Peggy Proctor, Spanish teacher.
Annika Scott, Assistant Principal of Lunenburg Middle High School.
Chad Adams, Assistant Principal of Turkey Hill Elementary School and Lunenburg Primary School.
So I think of the Professional Development Committee as, beginning with Kate had a vision, and the vision was a big vision. And somehow, a group of people came together and formed who were very excited about this vision. And each person who came to this Professional Development Committee came with a certain skill set, and I liken it to having a potluck dinner and everybody knows what to bring without speaking to each other. And the excitement and energy in this particular committee and the amount of work that we got done in a very short amount of time to pull off this day is still astounding to me. And we're continuing to get feedback from educators who participated in that day. So the first part is we tried something different. On September 24th, the Professional Development Committee organized our first Professional Development Summit. It included presenters from across the country, speaking to us about how to support students who have experienced trauma and or have mental health needs. So we were...the primary focus was social-emotional learning and its impact on the students. Whoops. Here? Here? Professional Development Committee, we have Chad Adams, Allison Alvez Pidgen, Haley Martin, Fran McCluskey, Gail Ockerman, Maggie Popora, Peggy Proctor, Jennifer Rios, Annika Scott, and Sandra Sheehy.
And so they invited presenters from Pittsburgh State, Indiana University, UMass Boston, California State University, Monterey Bay, Independent School District of Dallas, Worcester State College, ADHD Essentials of Worcester, Connection of Georgia, educational entrepreneurs from a variety of locations. And that's a kind of an out-of-focus list of all of the presenters, and there were four different sessions that lasted an hour and 15 minutes each.
So what I think of when I see this is that we're holding a very big vision about how we want this day to look, and we have to pay attention to these discrete details for it to actually occur. So we had some people who could hold the bigger vision and other people who are just detail people, and they had to pay attention to every single little detail from the moment people came in until the moment people left. That included every participant, every educator, people from other districts who came in to participate, and also how we made our presenters feel welcome.
Oh, go back one...one second.
Yeah.
Did we put this later? So the people picked, it was sort of like an à la carte menu, and everyone registered in advance and selected the four that they wanted to go to. And so it was sort of like pick from all these different options.
This was a vast change from what we had experienced in the past, which was to go to a presentation and generally leave, and so there was a lot of choice, and people began to really feel engaged and excited throughout the day about their choices.
You want to do this, please?
Sure. We're still processing all the data that we took in from the Professional Development Day. There have been several educators that have integrated strategies and approaches that were learned. Some of those I've witnessed as I've gone in and out of classrooms. It's been excellent. Several educators stated that the district was treating them as professionals. The presenters felt welcomed and attended to by the district, the process, and their individual ambassadors. So all of the members of our committee and also the other admin staff served as ambassadors to welcome the presenters from the moment they went in the door to escorting them to the classrooms they needed to be in, making sure that technology was hooked up properly. We gave feedback forms to all the attendees of each session. Now we have survey forms for those attendees as well in terms of the feedback for the entire day versus just the individual sessions. We've heard from other districts already who like to partner with us for future professional development opportunities, which is an excellent opportunity for us because it doubles, you know, our choices or even multiplies our choices, you know, going forward. So we're really excited about that.
This was welcoming the educators into the auditorium. These are some of the presentations. We had a presentation on Addiction 101 by Tara Rivera, Classroom Strategies for Supporting Students with Behavioral Problems. These are some of the presentations. This was a quote on empathy. Empathy, educators need to be seated in empathy. It is through relationship that education takes place. Did any of you go to any of these? Can you speak to any of them? Chad, do you want to speak to any of the presentations?
So I really felt that it was an excellent opportunity for everyone. The variety of workshops that we had, the one that I attended, I was ambassador for Chandler Creed...
Chandler Creed, from Pittsburgh State.
The level of participation from the people who attended, I thought, was open and honest. You know, even for an administrator sitting in the room, I felt like people were felt comfortable enough to discuss their feelings on certain topics, so I really felt it was worthwhile. And I think if we continue this way, it's going to open up a lot more opportunities for the district to have summits like this or be participate with other districts on a larger scale for professional development summits.
The part of what I think was so important about that day is I've presented in other districts, and I have gone away from those districts not feeling welcomed and struggling through moments with technology and not knowing where to go in the building. And every single person that I spoke to who was a presenter left our building feeling so welcomed, and for us to be developing, to have a shared vision, to develop a network well beyond this particular moment means that people have to go out into their communities, and they represent it all over. So they bring something back to those communities, and they say how welcome they felt here, and other presenters then, that would draw other presenters in. So it was, I think, successful from my point of view as well.
More pictures.
Yep, more pictures. This is A World on the Move. This is Marisol Mercado. She came from Georgia to present, and she did a presentation in regards to the changing and shifting cultures and the level of differences that are represented in our district. We had a presenter's luncheon, and of course, the food trucks that were available to staff for lunch that almost did not happen. So the level of detail part is like, in the end, you pull it off and you say, oh my goodness. This was one of the...so...
At the end of the day, we had gotten sponsors, and we had a little raffle at the end of the day from these businesses that contributed. And I think we have to recognize the people who did all the paperwork because honestly, it was very well-organized, and I had nothing to do with that. But administrative assistance, I mean, it was crazy organized. When they came in, they got their schedule, they got raffle tickets, we had folders, and it was great.
So we say, stay tuned. There's another day scheduled for November 5th. We'll be focusing on content, direct instruction, and differentiation of instruction. We'll be recruiting educators from our own districts and from other districts to present in an area of expertise. So we're beginning to understand that within our own district, there are people who have established themselves as experts, and we want to begin to tap into that. And I think there'll be a new level of excitement in the district from educators. The biggest takeaway is that educators are beginning to feel as if they're being treated as professionals in our district, and I think it was a win-win day for everyone. So it was just a great...it was a great experience, I think, for each one of us to be a part of. So thank you. Questions? Comments?
I'd just like to make a comment. Having been part of a team that have prepared this kind of day for educators, I know the kind of work and the detail that is required. I can't believe you did it that fast, and I can't believe your turnaround for the next go-round is that fast. Hats off to you for that. And I also know, as a previous, as a former educator, that's the kind of professional development that sticks with you, that makes you want to run back to your classroom and try things. So you're to be congratulated on a wonderful job.
Thank you. Thank you for recognizing that. Thank you.
And I just want to thank the sponsors, the local sponsors that stepped up. I think that's important that they get the recognition that you were showing them as well. And I was at the Resilience filming. I did speak to several educators after the fact. They were raving about the day. They were very much appreciative of the entire thing. And as we were talking about that, I recalled that that was one of the things that kind of when we were interviewing for new superintendent, one of the things that really stuck out was this kind of collaborative PD that brought people together. And I'm so glad that Dr. Burnham and the committee were able to get that pulled together, and I can't wait to see where this goes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, yeah, it was really...
Dr. Burnham.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for holding this kind of day happen.
No.
It was really and truly their energy, excitement, passion, commitment to pulling off a great day for their colleagues. Thank you.
You invited the right people to the potluck.
Led by vision.
And they cooked the right stuff.
Power of teams.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you so much.
I thought your presentation was great. I was able to attend the Professional Development during the day, and I truly enjoyed it. I thought it was so innovative. It was low-cost. You opened it up to other districts, which not many schools do that. The choice was awesome. I feel like as an educator, I love to have the choice of what I want to go to and what really fits my needs. I thought the out-of-state presenters was just so innovative, too. The visuals, getting them on the screen, it was just really innovative, and the diversity of the presentations. I thought it was so important and great that you guys got feedback from staff after and feedback from the presenters, and you're using data to improve it, and the prizes were great, too. And I think, just in general, putting this committee together was a great idea where you have educators working with administrators and collaborating. And when we have time to do that, that's so important so we can have the best product out there.
I think it's important to note that on the committee, we have a member representing the secretarial staff. We have a member representing the paraprofessionals, teachers, administrators, specialists, you know, service providers. So everybody's needs are represented, which is really important.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jamie.
So we are now on to public comment regarding agenda items. If anyone has any public comment regarding agenda items, come on up. Although we've got to get the mic. Oh, yeah, I think you're going to be there.
This is limited to agenda items?
Yes. So this public comment is limited to items that are on our agenda. So items that are on our agenda tonight. So this public comment.
Thank you for your time. My name is Susan Diamondopoulos, 53, Whiting Street, and I'm a retired Lunenburg teacher, but I'm here tonight as the Vice Chairman of ROAR, which stands for Resources for Opioid Awareness and Recovery. We are a grassroots volunteer organization who came together three years ago. Our goal and mission are to make a difference in the lives of those suffering with substance use disorder and families affected by the current opioid crisis. Our hope is with continuous education, we can save lives and prevent the devastation that this disease causes, as well as the loss of life. Over 70,000 individuals in 2017 died of a drug overdose. Over 70,000 individuals in 2017 died of a drug overdose. Today, the statistics are that each and every day, 130 people across the country die of a drug-related overdose. Adolescent substance use is America's number-one public health problem. Thirteen is the average age of first-time drug and alcohol use. Nine out of 10 addictions start in the teen years. With those statistics, we cannot ignore the need for education. ROR will be presenting another forum on Thursday, October 17th, at the Lunenburg Middle High School. The title is Athletic Injuries and Pain Management: What Parents Should Know. Often, our youth's first exposure to pain medicine is due to a sports injury leading to orthopedic surgery or an oral surgery such as tooth extraction, wisdom teeth removal, and a dry socket. We do know that some youth are at higher risk and more vulnerable to addiction for many reasons. This program gives the facts of what parents should know and what they can advocate for with their doctors, dentists, and oral surgeons. We have local Dr. Paul Harrisowitz from Ayer, an orthopedic surgeon, Dr. Michael Cronin, dentist from Lemonster, Tara Rivera from Recovery Centers of America, Mary Chapman, a woman whose son is in long-term recovery, will share her story, and Jack Kelly, an author and person in long-term recovery, whose journey through addiction and recovery began in high school from a hockey-related injury. I certainly appreciate the time that Dr. Burnham has given me tonight as well as the support of her and the school committee and the administration from the middle and high school. And we encourage the Lunenburg School Committee and others from our community to attend. And I always, as a teacher, visual. So, please come and thank you again for your time.
If you want to put one in front of my house, feel free to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Any other public comment? Next on our agenda, we will, we have warrants out for signature and we have a line item transfer.
We do. So, this evening, we have a request from Mr. Launda to transfer $106 from the electricity line to the fuel oil line. The purpose of this request is to fund topping off all school emergency generators. He believes that sufficient funds are available in the electricity line to cover the remaining electricity costs. We have a second request from Heidi Spinney requesting that we release the rental costs for the extended day at TCP. So, there's a monthly charge. Currently, we're looking to move $6,500 from our extended day account to the town for the rental, August, September, and October. And the additional 500, because it was 2,000 a month, is because that fifth classroom has now come online.
I'll make a motion to accept the line item transfer of $106 from electricity to the fuel oil line as well as the $6,500 from extended day to the facilities used.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And has everyone had a chance to take a look at our minutes? Regular session, September 18th, and executive session, September 4th.
Yes. I did have a few things in the regular session, but Dr. Burnham says she will adjust those.
So, I'll take a motion to approve those with the amendments suggested by Carol.
I can move to accept the minutes of the executive session, September 4th, as well as September 18th regular session as amended with the amendments that I suggested to Dr. Burnham.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Superintendent's report.
Okay, so, this evening, I wanted to mention that there is new legislation pending. The bill is the Student Opportunity Act. This particular legislation would make an unprecedented $1.5 billion in new investment in Massachusetts public education. The purpose here is to ensure that all students get what they need to access an education regardless of the area in which they live. Some of the important pieces that are incorporated into this legislation, they're looking at funding healthcare, insurance increases, increases in special education, increased costs related to educating English language learners, additional monies to support students from low-income households. They are also looking to provide additional guidance and psychological services. They're making an adjustment to the circuit breaker monies. They're also going to be allocating additional monies for the MSBA. So, additional projects will be able to be granted through the MSBA. They are also looking to create several commissions. One would be a data advisory commission. Another would be, as an example, the Rural Schools Commission. We don't have all the details yet as to how this will impact Lunenburg. Stay tuned as this sort of evolves and we'll keep you updated. But it is promising and we will certainly be receiving more money. And this would be for FY '21.
That's assuming the governor signs it.
Correct.
Just one other thing I had noticed in the act, too, was that they would be fully funding the charter reimbursements, too. I spoke with Senator Tran's office recently, and right now, they're in the process of looking at amendments. So, they'll be discussing amendments to the bill, potentially voting on those and then voting on the bill. Then it'll move to the House. And then our representatives can, like, same thing, amend it and vote on it.
Yeah, and I think that it's important to note that this is kind of one of those landmark moments. You know, every form of 1993 was one of those moments in education in making a move to fully fund school districts so that they can provide the best education for the students in the state. Again, this is another landmark moment in the state.
I think it's important for the public, all the citizens of Lunenburg, to reach out to Senator Tran and also Representatives Haye and Benson to let them know that they want this to get passed and that they should be willing to support this.
As well as the governor.
As well as the governor, right?
As well as the governor.
And this really had its roots, if you remember, last winter. There was the panel presentation at Fitchburg State University. This movement has continued to gain momentum. And you can see that here.
Yeah, I think we see it with the teachers. The teachers' union here supported it, the administration, the school committee. I think when we're all working together, we can get some things done.
Yep, so, stay tuned. More to come.
And we had done a resolution.
Yes, we did. I'd also suggest that people contact legislators and the governor's office once again because I know I read in the paper that there is a faction that wishes to put this into effect over seven years. So, seven years is a long time to wait for some of this.
So, moving on, I have a little bit of an update regarding before and after-school care options for families for next year. You may recall that at our July 31st meeting, the director of the Boys and Girls Club spoke during public comment and seemed to indicate that perhaps there were solutions that the Boys and Girls Club could bring to the table. That was, I thought, maybe providing some new information that had changed relative to my conversation with her last May. So, I did meet with her September 25th. We had some more conversation, but she again reiterated that space is an issue, staffing in the morning is definitely an issue, that's not an option. Staffing, additional staffing in the afternoon would be a challenge because currently, they fundraise year-round to pay the staff they have currently. So, those parameters really haven't changed. She said that, you know, she would be interested in looking at the possibility of maybe including the Turkey Hill students, which would be grades three, four, and five. But again, space is a challenge, staffing is a challenge. She may have to rely on the older students that are at the Boys and Girls Club to help supervise activities for the younger students. And with this model, she would like to see the school department bus the children to the Boys and Girls Club for the afternoon. Again, I don't know that that's truly feasible, given the other limitations that she outlined. But, you know, she did indicate that she'd be willing to at least have some conversation with her executive board about it. So, stay tuned on that. I hope I'm not taking Claire's thunder, but our soccer clinic, are you going to cover the soccer clinic?
Yes.
Okay. So, our high school soccer players, boys and girls, are running a free clinic for the LISA players. And they're asking that attendees bring a canned food item for the Lunenburg food pantry. We have some additional community events coming up. The Lunenburg Public Library will be hosting a drop-in event from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. on October 16th. That's our next school committee meeting. As part of the Pink Revolution Breast Care Alliance Initiative, attendees will be making inspirational cards, which will be included in chemo care packages that will be sent to cancer centers in Massachusetts and New Hampshire. So, if anyone has time, do drop in. As already presented, ROR will be hosting that presentation on youth and pain management Thursday, October 17th at 6:30 at the Middle High School Auditorium. Miles for Miles will be Sunday, October 20th this year. The PTO is looking for volunteers for this event, and the registration flyer is available on our website. And lastly...
For the Miles for Miles, I heard that was going to be the last one this year?
The last one. Oh, my gosh, I hadn't heard that. Oh, wow.
So, is there concern about...
That's a can't-miss, then.
Yeah, but, well, also about, like, just donations, too, that they donate a lot to the schools, too? Is that a concern that we're missing out? Are they...
I'm wondering if they have ideas for other fundraising events. I don't know.
Miles for Miles was taken over by the PTO a handful of years ago. It was transitioned off from the original family-based committee that it was.
Something to bring up at the PTO meeting?
Yeah. I'll have to look into that. Lastly, we have some staff recognition. We want to thank our custodians and our coaches for all they do for our students. National Custodial Workers Day is today, and National Coaches Day is October 6th. So, we do have some proclamations to read to honor both of these groups.
Jim has the proclamation for custodians.
So, that, which oddly enough was one of my first summer jobs, was working as a school custodian at a high school. So, Custodian Appreciation Day Resolution. Lunenburg School Committee hereby recognizes the day of October 2nd, 2019, as National Custodial Workers Recognition Day to recognize and thank our dedicated Lunenburg Public Schools custodial staff. Whereas our custodians are constantly responsible for all Lunenburg Public School facilities, they are the first employees to arrive in the morning and last employees to leave at night. And whereas custodians work closely with community use groups and provide support for after-school care programs to provide a safe, clean, and secure environment for the instructional program, and whereas their contribution is critical in allowing for the smooth daily operation of the school, now therefore let be resolved by the School Committee of Lunenburg Public Schools the second day of October 2019 as follows. Section 1, the School Committee of Lunenburg Public Schools recognizes the importance of the contribution that custodians make to the educational process. And Section 2, the School Committee of Lunenburg Public Schools, on behalf of all students and personnel, does hereby resolve and to proclaim the day, October 2, 2019, as Custodian Appreciation Day for Lunenburg Public Schools, urging all parents, students, and employees to join and congratulating all custodians for jobs well done and in saying thank you. And adopted this second day of October 2019.
And National Coaches Day Resolution. Whereas on August 29th, 1972, the Senate passed a joint resolution authorizing and requesting President Richard Nixon to designate October 6th, 1972, as National Coaches Day. Whereas there are an estimated 20 million coaches in the United States, including youth, junior high, travel, high school, college, and professional coaches. Whereas three out of every four families in the United States with school-aged children have at least one child playing an organized sport, totaling approximately 45 million children in the United States that play an organized sport. Whereas in high school, an estimated 55% of students play a sport and need the support of a coach. Whereas coaches represent stability, consistency, and direction in the lives of many athletes despite the lives of coaches being fast-paced and high-stress. Whereas coaches represent a source of strength and hope in the lives of millions of young athletes. Whereas a coach is a friend, a counselor, a mentor, and an advocate that helps demonstrate to athletes teamwork, discipline, and healthy attitude toward competition. And whereas the designation of October 6th, 2019, as National Coaches Day will raise public awareness about the important and significant role that coaches play in the lives of millions of people in the United States. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Lunenburg School Committee recognizes the positive impact that coaches play on communities and players, designates October 6th, 2019, as National Coaches Day, and encourages the people of the United States to observe the day with appropriate ceremonies and activities. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. First student report.
So, as Dr. Burnham mentioned, there is the LISA canned food game and the 3 to 5 at the library. They're making cards for chemo patients, and the high school NHS is participating in that, so they're going to be there. And freshman elections were pushed back for student council representatives, and they have been pushed back again, so they'll be on the 4th now. But all of the class officers have already been elected, so student council representatives are the ones that do still need to be elected. Girls' soccer is 1 and 8. Boys' soccer is 1 and 7. Football is 2 and 1. And for senior updates, FAFSA, which is the Federal Financial Aid, opened yesterday, so seniors are getting into that, and guidance is encouraging them to start those forums. And seniors are also having individual meetings with their guidance counselors, and parents are invited to come to those to talk to the guidance counselors and the students one-on-one. And then for student council, we have homecoming coming up. So, we've chosen a marshal and they're being contacted, so we're just confirming that. And then we have Spirit Week the day, or the week before, leading up to homecoming. So, Monday is going to be USA-themed. Tuesday, everyone's going to wear college apparel. Wednesday is going to be Pink Out in honor of October being Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Thursday is going to be a camo day, and then on Friday... Thursday is gonna be a camo day, and then on Friday, all of the classes wear their class shirts. And then at the end of the day, there's the rally put on by student council.
What was the date of homecoming?
Uh, homecoming is on the 19th.
Thank you. And new business, um, the outdoor facility signage. Mr. Londa, could you come up and talk with us about that?
Good evening, John Londa, Director of Facilities. You know, most of our policies around the facilities currently fall into, you know, school use associated with organizations, and, uh, we don't really have a lot of, uh, policy that directs about individual conduct outside those organizations. And we are seeing more individuals come on the school grounds using the grave facilities we have. And, uh, you know, so what we were trying to do with this outdoor signage, uh, is to provide some guidance for those individuals that are coming on the school grounds, uh, because we have been seeing some things, some behaviors that, uh, we think we need to control. And currently, we don't have much signage for individuals. Uh, if you came on the school grounds, you might get some notices about parking and where you can park, and, like, that we have security cameras. There really isn't anything that says what you can or cannot do on school grounds. And so that's, uh, this was an initial draft of, of some, uh, signage for school grounds. And, uh, so, and these are, so these are, I went and looked at kind of just a general search of what other schools are doing, thought about what we might need to do, uh, and, uh, and put together this draft. And I'll go through these with you, but, and like I said, this is just a draft, but, uh, it, it does kind of get us to think about certain issues of how, uh, individuals connect themselves on the school grounds. So, uh, we don't, currently don't have any rules that say you can't be on the school grounds after a certain hour. We shut the lights off at the middle school, high school at 11:00, uh, most nights. There are some nights it goes later than that based upon, you know, custodial staff working late. But by 11 o'clock, they're about to be shutting down all the exterior lighting, parking lot lighting, building lighting. The primary school, uh, we do that a little bit earlier, that's around 10:15. And that just, and then once again, it's a little bit different in that, um, well, it's a, we, we leave the custodial staff out at 10:00 usually, and, uh, and usually I don't have people staying late there, but, uh, it is surrounded by other, you know, residential structures, and having all the lights on the parking lots are, is not necessarily a good thing for that, for those folks. So we're looking to close school grounds from 11:00 PM to 11:00 AM. Any signage we did for the primary school, we probably would roll that back to 10:00, uh, 10:00 to 6:00. Grounds being closed to, to public use, uh, we, we have been seeing, you know, not huge volumes, but, but more of this, where people showing up, uh, using the school grounds during the school day. And, uh, the things we're pretty much seeing are, you know, walkers and runners on the track, uh, you know, tennis courts in use, and, uh, you know, so we have, uh, this came up as an issue, uh, a week or two ago. Uh, one of the physical education teachers weren't, was coming outside and they're seeing all these people, and like, oh, who are these folks? And are they, do they have the court reserved? They, you know, they might've had the courts figured into a plan for use, and now there's a group there using... So, uh, so, uh, that, and there's a playground, sometimes we get people showing up to playgrounds, uh, you know, during the school day. I don't see it a lot, but this, does happen. And, uh, so, you know, so the language on it would say, you know, grounds are closed to public, uh, to public use when the school is in session, when facilities are in use for school events. And, uh, you know, obviously, if we're, if, if we got the public to come, that's to the event, that's fine, uh, but we do think about things like, okay, uh, you know, if we had some event going on that, that we didn't want the public, we might have some language to that effect. Like I said, we, right now, we, we do have people showing up using courts, uh, on school grounds. We do have a sign that says that the school parking lot, the high school parking lot is for the high school use during the school day, or words to that effect. Uh, but I think we're still getting people, you know, showing up, using the parking lot so they could be accessed to courts. The third one was that, you know, having to do with dogs, uh, and, uh, their ability to bring dogs on the school ground. Currently, we don't really have anything posted, we don't really have any restrictions on it. We have folks that walk their dogs on school grounds, uh, most of them, you know, take care of the, cleaning up after their dogs. We somehow, we have some folks that, that will walk, you know, their dogs off-leash on school grounds. Uh, we have not had any incidents yet with, with anybody being bitten or anything like that, but we do have that going on. Uh, and then, uh, this summer, we had, uh, a couple of, uh, dog owners show up and want to use the, uh, the pre-K playground enclosure as a dog park. So, so we do have these things going on, uh, as I said, we don't really have any, any rules posted, uh, so, uh, something we should, should be coming to grips with.
Can I suggest, before you go and go into number four, is that you include some language here about cleaning up after the animals? If the dogs are there, if there's, even if they're surface animals, that they're, the waste must be cleaned up?
We could try and do that.
Because I know I've heard some parents complain about running into messes in the fields, so, even though, you know, they're, they're probably not surface animals at that point.
So we have, we have the range of behavior, you know, we have some folks that take care of their animals and others...
And others that don't.
The fourth item was, was, uh, all activities other than those which the grounds were designated are forbidden. Now, just kind of a very broad statement. But we do have folks occasionally show up and, and want to golf on school grounds, you know, on an athletic field. We occasionally have snowmobiling that goes on, uh, you know, and we just see the, the results afterwards, uh, you know, snowmobile tracks in athletic fields, things like that. Skateboarding, uh, the skateboarding is, I listed it here, um, you know, we have, we do have a number, a number of folks that skateboard on school grounds. Um, you know, I, I would say generally, uh, there are specific places we don't need skateboarders, such as the tennis courts, uh, or any of the entryways to the buildings. And, and those have been the problem areas in the past. I don't, I personally don't really see any, really issues with them being out on sidewalks or, or roadways, but there are places that they, they do go that, that does cause some problems. And archery, I haven't seen anybody doing archery, but I wouldn't want anybody doing The fifth one, uh, you know, it says alcoholic beverages are strictly forbidden, and obviously that list of forbidden things, you know, could, could be to, to include smoking, uh, tobacco use, e-cigarettes, uh, so that, that probably could, couldn't, shouldn't be expanded.
I think so.
Yes.
The sixth one is just kind of a, just a disclaimer that says, hey, if you're doing stuff that you're not supposed to be doing here, you, you couldn't get arrested. And so these are the, because it's just general purpose signs, uh, but I would think that we would have probably five or six of these. We'd have something at the primary school, we'd have a couple, you know, probably try to cover most of the routes into the school, uh, probably two in the high school parking lot, probably one coming off of Mass Avenue, uh, coming up towards the front of the school, and one some coming off of Oak Avenue. So, so these are just, uh, initial draft, but...
I'd also suggest that number six isn't really a, a number six, it's more of a statement. It's kind of like the rules for school, school use are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5?
Yeah.
And then violators are subject, and then please keep our schools cleaner. They're not numbered. They should, I, I don't think number six should be a numbered...
Okay.
...item. Do you want it to be our schools or your schools? Does our schools make more sense?
Our.
Well...
How are your? No, I don't know. I like our.
Yeah, I like our. You said our, too, and I, I was thinking ours as well.
And then I have a, uh, another sign that, that we would have just for the track and field facility. I have sent this off to the athletic director, he gave me some, some more feedback on it. You know, I've looked at some of what other people have out there, some, some facilities have sumage language, it's like reading a book. Uh, I tried to keep this short and sweet and focus on the things that people have, have expressed to me, their concerns, uh, you know, like I said, there could be a really, this could be a really long list. But, uh, the ones I hear about are, you know, folks with, uh, either bicycles or strollers out on the, out there, um, you know, same thing with, with, uh, anything that would, you know, could send, could potentially puncture either a hole in the track or a hole in the turf, uh, so things like the folding chairs, uh, any of the sports equipment, um, you know, metal cleats.
I wonder in line four about all activities other than those which the grounds were designed or potentially could damage, the grounds are forbidden? Something about potentially damaging in line four?
Uh, you know, uh, for the most part, I was thinking it's really focused on the issue at the track and field facility. So I said, this, this we were envisioning, uh, you know, two signs. One, as you come to the track and field facility from high school parking lot, the other one from the Turkey Hill side.
Um, and the track and field one is, is certainly a lot more, um, detailed. I'm wondering if the, if the playing fields are for athletic use only and open to the public unless in use by the school department or community users approved by the school facility. We mentioned that the track is not available during school, when school is in session, but the playing fields, this implies that the playing fields are available during, when school is in session? At least the language right now is, is vague on that point, which if, I don't know if that's the intent?
Uh, you know, I always thought it was, actually, the athletic director and I did discuss, you know, wording this so that it would say something to the effect that, uh, they are not open to the public if in use by the school department or, you know, our community users. Try to get a little more clarity around that.
Right, so, but in use of the school department doesn't, doesn't, doesn't necessarily say during school hours, right, when school is in session? Because you may not have people out there on the field when school is in session, but you may not want the public out there on the field when school is in session. I don't know what, what the intent was for this.
Yeah, I think, you know, so the first set of signs would say, hey, look, you know, you're on school grounds, you're in, you know, we're, you're, it's closed because we're in session.
Okay. And then this is just the deeper dive?
And this is the deeper, so you had to get past those signs to get to this side.
All right.
If you're here, and it's after school, you know, what we were seeing as the issue is, uh, you know, okay, we have lacrosse going on, on the field, and we have people on the track trying to run, and we got lacrosse balls flying around. That was the intent, try to keep those folks from being out there, you know, which essentially is somewhat of a hazardous situation.
And I'm assuming those, those bigger, those first signs will be close to the signs that say we have security cameras?
Yes, yeah, I, you know, we, we want this near the...
Because if you come out here, you're on, you're on candid camera now, so if you're, if you're doing things, we're gonna see it, okay?
So, uh, like I said, this was an initial, initial shot at this. Uh, like I said, it, I think, you know, you know, for the longest time, we've, we've kind of just operated with, you know, hoping that folk, folks would, you know, be considerate and take care of things and, you know, but, and without providing a lot of guidance. And so I think we're kind of at the point where maybe we need to give a little more guidance because, uh, the facility use has gone up, and that's, you know, a function of, that we've put in lots of sidewalks and lots of great facilities, and it's attracting people, which is...
More people.
That's good.
It's good. It's just that we need to control when they're there.
Yeah. Well, we, we have a society where we have to tell them not to shower with a, a hairdryer, so, yeah, the, the signs are great.
What's the timeline on for this in terms of getting the signage, you know, printed and posted?
Um, you know, I think we'll make a modification of this, send this out for, for coordination one more time, and then probably bring it back for, you know, a blessing on it.
Next meeting.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Londa, don't go anywhere. You're up again. Uh, we'll be taking action. Tell us about surplus vehicle.
So, uh, we have, we have a 2006 Pontiac G6 sedan that was initially purchased for, uh, for the school department's driver's ed program, when we had such a program, and, um, the vehicle is, has somewhere around 60,000 miles on it. For, since the school, since that program ended, which has been...
Quite a while.
Probably nine years ago. Uh, the vehicle's been in use, but in very, very limited means. Uh, it's been available, we've used it for a number of things, but not a lot of mileage have been put on it. Uh, it is, uh, as part of the town's green community participation, uh, which the school committee, uh, did approve, uh, a vehicle, uh, policy, as part of the town's vehicle policy, this vehicle, uh, would be considered a, uh, inefficient vehicle, and the, the town and the school department have to get rid of this vehicle within 10 years. So we entered in green community in December of 2013, so the vehicle, uh, has to be gotten rid of by December 2023 at the latest. Uh, it cannot be transferred to another department as it's, doesn't meet the efficiency that this, that the town and the state is looking for for a two-wheel-drive sedan. Uh, it's currently run, gets about 24 miles per gallon combined, and the standard for green communities, uh, criteria for is 29 miles per gallon. So the vehicle currently is, uh, is at, over by the Brooks House, uh, it is overdue for an inspection, um, you know, I, I would recommend that we declare it excess, we'll report it to the town manager that we're declaring it excess. Uh, once again, it cannot go to another department, and, uh, at that point, we would put it out, we would want to put it out for bid, uh, and as is condition, and see if we have anybody interested in it. If we got, uh, if we got a bid back, we would compare that against its scrap value, make sure that it, that we'll take the whatever is the higher, the scrap value or, or bid. And so that, my recommendation is to declare it excess and start moving towards getting rid of it.
Make a motion that the 2006 Pontiac G6 sedan be declared excess and offered for sale?
I'll second.
I'll bear.
Aye.
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 Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Londa. Now we have a FLAC update and the capital reserve fund.
So FLAC has officially moved their, um, high school program into that building in Leominster. Uh, the executive director gave all of the superintendents a tour of that facility at our August executive board meeting. There is a small amount of space still available on the first floor. So FLAC has part of the first floor and all of the second floor. So, uh, the board voted to approve, um, the executive director exploring with the landlord, renting that additional space. Um, having that additional space will allow them, as rental contracts expire for office space in other areas, they can relocate potentially to that area. There's also the possibility that the space could be utilized for professional development offerings, so that's all, you know, good news and, uh, good use of that space. Um, other than that, um, the, the collaborative would like to, um, establish a capital reserve fund. So, um, if, by regulation, the collaborative is allowed to, um, hold on to a certain value of monies, right? And anything in excess of that currently has to be returned to the districts. We're not talking about a lot of money when you think about all of... We're not talking about a lot of money when you think about all of the districts that are involved. It's not like, you know, Lunenburg would get back thousands of dollars. So they would like to be able to take that excess money and put it into this capital reserve account. They have developed a capital plan and essentially the monies over time would be used to replace their vans, their transportation vans. So this, you know, is a good way to start to prepare for those expenses rather than having our tuitions increased at the times that those types of expenses are needed. They're trying to be proactive. It's very similar to the town having stabilization fund, right? And putting some monies into a capital plan project. So that's, that's what they're looking to do. They will need two-thirds of the school committees for the representative districts for the collaborative to vote to approve the establishment of this reserve fund for capital projects.
Anyone have any other questions regarding?
No.
No?
Take a motion.
Make a motion to accept the FLAC capital reserve fund establishment. I could have said that clearer.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
And we have a donation.
We do. So we have some additional miscellaneous school supplies that have been donated by Dr. Giannino and the, his dentist office. Again, it's similar to the last donation of miscellaneous supplies, markers, colored pencils, crayons, glue sticks, composition notebooks. So these materials would be divided up and distributed to the four schools. And I would recommend that we accept this donation.
Well, I can make a motion to accept this generous donation from Dr. Giannino and his office, and we thank them very much.
I'll second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And we are on to our second public comment, which is open to any topic.
Hi. Excuse me. Hi, Rhonda Lysio, 181 Reservoir Road. I was watching from home the earlier presentation on behavioral health, and I heard it mention that there will be universal mental health screening and a mental health profile, an electronic mental health profile on each child. And I just wanted to say, as someone who places a high value on privacy, I would not have allowed this type of intrusion into my child's life unless there was a just cause. Thank God she's graduated and I no longer have to worry about this. But I'm just wondering, could, would parents be able to opt out of this? And who would have access to this information?
Do you like me to address that?
Sure.
So just as all of our student records, this would, this would be part of a confidential student record. Largely, the folks who are going to archive this information would be the individuals that you saw here this evening. Our director of nursing services for the district and our social worker in the district. Parents absolutely will be able to opt out. As they indicated, they will be sending a letter home once they have all of the other pieces in place to roll out the screening, including the training of the staff who might be needed to respond, to support students. But yes, the plan is that there will be an opt-out.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there is no other public comment.
I had a public comment. I just wanted to mention that Lunenburg Grange is going to be having one of their first events on October 18th, their pumpkin fest at the senior center. They're going to be carving pumpkins and doing other activities.
Time on that, do you know?
I wasn't sure about the time. It's in the evening.
Any other comment? All right, then.
If there's any flyer or other information, we'd be happy to post that under community links on the website.
Great. Thank you.
I know that, I don't remember the date off the top of my head, but the Boys and Girls Club Shrieks and Creeks is coming up. I think it's the week after.
Is it the week after Homecoming this year?
Sure. And again, if, if some type of flyer is forwarded, we'd be happy to post it under community links.
All right, and our reports, athletic advisory.
Nothing new. The next meeting is November 4th at 6:30 PM.
That's good. Fincom.
Well, the finance committee met on the 26th of September, and the town manager did give an overview of how she develops the target budget. It comes down to, as best I could grasp, the increase of contractual costs and health insurance. And then everything else is level funded. So supplies and anything else, correct? Okay, you were where I was. I was going to re-watch it just because I wanted to make sure I had it right. And then Monday, when I had time to re-watch it, it wasn't up yet. So I will re-watch it when I can. But that's basically what I came down to, it came down to, as far as I could tell. Free cash is used for capital expenditures, we've mentioned that before. It's recommended that some free cash be unappropriated and saved for the following year. And that's a recommendation from the Department of Revenue. Because in some years, you end up with negative free cash. And so that way you cover yourself. There was a discussion about the careful planned increase of police and fire department personnel, which was needed by the community, and that it was a result of a data-focused presentation of need by those departments to the town manager. And that if the school department was certainly welcome to do the same. And there was some discussion about the effects of collective bargaining on the long-term budget, which resulted in a request for further discussion at another time. So that will be brought up again. Then there was discussion about the joint meeting of the select board, finance committee and the school committee on the 29th of October in the auditorium. And each of the three speakers, that would be the committee chairs or their designees, will speak to where we are at this moment, how we got into this spot, and where we need to go.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes, by all means.
Was planning, were they planning to include the planning board in that?
The planning board, I believe, was invited and did not respond.
Okay.
I believe that was the case. However, the town planning director, Mr. Bernie, will be there.
Okay.
So the discussion would include what drives the direction of where we should go and the impact of growth in each of these departments. There would be no discussion back and forth, well, see, I just said the discussion. It should be the presentation would include, because it's not going to be a back and forth discussion. It would just be clarifying questions from committee members first and then from the general public. And each committee is required to post this meeting because there will be a majority of the members present. And the meeting will probably be run by the finance committee chair. So their next meeting is October 3rd at 6 o'clock to discuss the warrant articles for the special town meeting coming up. And the public hearing about those warrant articles is the 10th of October. And that's what I have.
Policy subcommittee.
We haven't met yet.
We have not met yet. Soon.
Like we were trying to nail down a time and date, weren't we?
Monday. Yes. We're in process with that.
PTO.
Hmm, PTO.
Me.
No update on PTO.
I can give you a little update.
You can? Oh, because you were there.
So the PTO is resurrecting their grant program, I guess you could call it, their request for funds, where teachers can submit proposals and request funds from each school. We will be having them on an agenda at an upcoming meeting so that they can explain that for themselves.
As part of.
They're going to be donating essentially this money to the schools.
That, when I was PTO president, that's actually when that was born. So it's great to see it come back. It kind of hit a plateau for a while, so they were great with picking up other, you know, looking at other options and ways to contribute to the community. And it's nice to see that coming back.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting, actually.
It is, very much. School councils.
The elementary school council will meet on October 8th.
The primary schools meeting October 16th.
We haven't met since the last time.
Okay.
I know it's on my calendar somewhere.
Capital planning.
That was on my calendar for yesterday, but it was not happening yesterday. So the next meeting that we have is the 29th. So the, the information has gone out to the, everybody to request their capital plans with the new format. And then we'll start evaluating on the 29th.
Is that meeting before the symposium?
It is before the symposium. So I believe that they were going to reach out to you to see if there's space for us in a collaborative room to meet before the symposium so that we could just easily transfer over.
Okey-dokey. Do you know what time that's supposed to start?
Cap planning's 5 usually.
I think it's 5 or 5:30. I think it's 5:30. And then the symposium's at 7.
That'll be a speedy agenda. I'll take care of it.
An hour and a half.
Wellness advisory is not met since the update I gave last meeting. And PACSAL.
That was Heather.
Yes. There is an upcoming meeting.
It's Friday at 11 AM.
But this Friday, maybe?
October 11th, I think.
Next, so two, so a week from Friday. And lifelong learning advisory is on hiatus or permanent.
We'll be probably trying to schedule a meeting soon, just to give you an update.
Excellent. That would be a good thing. We talked about that. We've had our programs in place for a while now, just to be able to take a look at what's working and what's, and how well it's working would be excellent. So topics for future discussion.
I'm wondering if we want to revisit our, the resolution on the school funding and maybe now that we have a, now that there is actually something there, is there something more that we want to do in terms of?
Action?
Action. From the committee and then the LEA may want to do something too.
Good idea.
Yeah, I would like to see something like that and send to our representatives and state senator and even the LEA and the governor.
So they know that we're paying attention.
Yes.
Well, looking at how we want to tweak what we, our previous statement.
And then send it out.
If we do, yeah.
If we do.
If we do, yeah. All right, then I will take, that's a wrap. I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn at 8:25.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Rubber band.
There you go.
Did you sign?